Alrighty, well howdy there Sandrockers! We are back with another episode! Loading, loading... Thinking real hard... There we go! Ah, Mr. Gecko, you are first! Ta-da! And here, we are going to have you get water. And Timon and Pumba are... Oh, there's Timon! Dude, what are you doing back there? Shniggles! Oh, that was really zoomed in! Aww... Alright, uh, you are gonna have Explore. Thanks buddy! Now, where is the last one? Banjo! Oh, Banjo! Seriously, where is he? The roof? Am I just not seeing him? I can't tell anymore. Okay, I have no idea where Banjo is, but I'm sure he'll pop up at some point. So let's just get some of those mail out of the way. "Citizens of Sandrock, after careful consideration of the situation and taking into mind the will of the people, City Hall has found it appropriate to put funding towards the hiring of a specialist to assist in tracking down Logan and his notorious bandit gang that has plagued this city all this time. We're having a fireside to discuss recent events with Matilda's kidnapping, the specialist being hired, and other future plans. If you have questions or concerns, please join us tomorrow at 1800. Thank you for your understanding." Alright... This is from Yan? Is it from Yan? Oh, it is from Yan. Okay, what kind of stuff does he have to say? Alright, newbie! "We got an important commission..." Uh, "we got a commission..." I can't even read that! Just gonna move on. "I thought I'd use this opportunity to create a little healthy competition between our builders. City Hall has told me we're going to need two new Yak Mill stations at the Little Woods and the Eufala Outback. This is prime real estate for traveling, so you know there's a juicy bonus in there. And whoever builds it first will get a reward too. Anyway, I'm leaving this one open for anyone to take. Whoever builds it first gets the reward. Go, go, go!" PS: If you don't build it, I'll take it as a direct insubordination. So chop-chop builders! Wow, what a dick! Ooh, from Elsie! "It's been blistering out lately, hasn't it? Wish them cattle would just wrangle themselves sometimes. Luckily, my old man's been drying out a whole mess of jerky to keep our spears up here. Try some for yourself." Why, thank you, Elsie! Alright, let's get some stuff! Did the Banjo appear? No? No Banjo? Is he hiding behind one of the machines? Nope? Though I should check these. Not bad, definitely not bad. Eh, we'll add to it anyway. Where is Banjo? Really wish I could assign him stuff from his hut, at the very least, because apparently he doesn't like to come for cuddle time. But, uh, what else do we expect from Banjo, really? Oh, I forgot to hang up the belt! Should pop in real quick and do that. Where shall we put it? Oh, if I had a chair, I'd be hopping on the... Yeah, let's just hang it there. That's a good enough spot. Banjo? Did you magically appear yet? No? Okay... Ah, little guy just doesn't wanna work. Okay, uh... So we've got something going on here? Yep, Yak Mill Station. And Yak Mill Station. Ha-ha, I knew I was gonna need those two stations at some point. Oh, Mort's got some stuff! And he's not in the graveyard, oh, or is he? He might be, actually. What's going on here? Another night out with Venti! Alright, got a lot of stuff to do today, okay. Uh, Arvio wants wood... And Grace wants soup pots. What does she need so many soup pots for? At least it's not as many frying pans as Mabel needs. I don't know what happens... Like, does her coop just, like, take it by the handle and smash it on something? Just because? It's the only reason I could think why they need so many frying pans. Let's make that great sword for Pen. Except I need iron wire. Okay, let's make some iron wire. Tree! Oh, it looks like we need some dusting. We gotta dust every once in a while, or, uh, machines become less effective. Huh, I don't know how that one's not dusty, but the water tower, or water tank is. Even when I can't see sand, I always try, just in case. I know I can't see it. I hope I don't have to do it for our pet house. There's Banjo, where have you been? Where have you been, mister? Are you sneaking out to cause mischief? I wouldn't put it past you, honestly. You are the mischief maker. Alright, so what are we gonna have you do? Most happy dick. Meow! Uh, let's see if I have to use this on... Oh, good, I don't think I have to. Uh, oh, and I already put stuff away. Already got the Yak Mill Stations in my inventory! Awesome, awesome, okay! Well, that greatsword is on the go. Well, the wire for it is, anyway. Uh, you know what? Let's talk to Venti. It's been a while since we had a little night outing with her. Oh, gonna have to pay to get in. It's a new way to see her now. You know, it's only 200. And I like to come in to get scraps every now and then. Alright, yeah, sure, let's go! Alrighty! Let's get some plastic. Nothing like beating up old plastic cannons. And boxes. Uh, do I wanna just get everything else here? Might as well. Oh, wait, no, if I do that, then I'll have nothing to get later. So we will leave that. Put a bunch of stuff away. No, I don't wanna pick it up, I wanna get off the horse. Get those wires. Get the scissor gun. Uh, why does it still have an arrow over this way? Oh, go to Scrapyard after, right, okay. Go out after dark, interesting. Might have to save that for tomorrow. It's 1 o'clock already, okay? Yeah, let's go see Mort, and then we'll go do those Yak Mill Stations. Just makes travel so much easier in the future. Oh, now there's three up here? What is going on? Is there a party in the graveyard? Oh, this is the Yak Mill Stations, wow, I'm dumb. Let's have storytime with Mort!
Ah, this photo?
Aww...
Oh, thank you! This is a photo I'd hoped most we'd be able to find. This, of course, is our wedding day. Everything was perfect then. Never was there a more picture-perfect model of Telenesis than on that day. We all shared that oasis. Not one of us was wanting. And as our little camp grew in numbers, so too did our family. That day, we thought we'd chosen a fate: to live forever in paradise. Let's just say, it's hard for me to believe in that old light doctrine: everything happens for a reason.
That got a little dark.
Thank you.
Does that mean that's the last photo? Hope it doesn't. Oh, I wanted to go to the Yak Mill Station, that's why I was going over here. I just kinda... I lost the thought for a minute there. Okay. Uh, wow, Timon, you're going far, good boy! Yeah, we'll go to the Gecko Station one? Oh, wait, hold on. Gonna put a marker here. Except I can't do that when I'm in Yak Mill now. Okay. Alright, yeah, okay, well, it's got arrows. Funny! Where is this one going, really? Oh, 'cause it's a fishing spot. Right, 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 right. Hallelujah! Ah, Penske's, hello! Oh, oh, there's that golden one! Yeah, let's get it, we golden! Sup, bud! Thank you for your contribution! There it is. And, there we go! Boom, baby! Ooh, glitch, glitch central! Okay, what is this little scrap pile over here? Can I destroy it? This looks like something I should be able to destroy, but no. Just gotta get Caragana... Ah, plant fiber, wood, and dew... I'm not surprised, okay. Well, let's use the Yak Mill Station to get back home. It's gonna be, like, probably twice as much as we're used to. Yeah, we'll go home. Yeah, 51. A little more than twice as much. Way here was 20... Well, the way from home to Gecko Station was 20. And from the Eufala, uh, Outback Station, to home, 51. See, it's a little bit expensive. But we should be fine. Alright, that sword is done. Is it good enough? Yes, it is. Oh, stop picking up random stuff! Just wanna get on the horse. Jeez! Pen!
Howdy!
Howdy! Uh, I think I missed the medicine tasting again. Just gonna come over here and double-check. Yeah, yeah? No? Yeah, he's finished for the day. Dang it! Ah, well... Oh, that's not a way up. Here's the way up. Here you are! Jeez, you keep getting weapons, you don't even know... Whoa, that's a lot of friendship boosts! Pen is my friend. And all I gotta do is make him weapons. Wow!
Howdy!
Music time! Come on, let's get the music on! Come on! Come on, I won't be standing here forever, come on! I got stuff to do. Ah, I guess I don't have to do it right away. Gotta go to the Scrapyard at 2300. Which is 11pm. Yeah, there's the music! Man, I wish I could get a good picture of this, or there's like a thumbnail or something. But everybody's names are above their heads! Yeah! Yeah, I won't stand there for the whole show, because that'll just be boring, unfortunately. Well, I don't know, do you guys really like the music? I know I love that song. Unfortunately, it's like the one song that they have. So, um... Uh, you know what, let's... Yeah, I could pick those up later. Go, Mr. Gecko! Okay, what is going on over here? I hope I'm not gonna be late for the Venti thing.
Logan, what are you thinking?
Are you yelling at a dead tree?
I just can't believe you did that! Oh, I didn't see any there. I must've been so worked up. Didn't notice nothing.
Kind of are in a mood. Kinda hard to notice things that come up behind ya.
What, uh, what are you doing here?
Well, kinda working about ya.
Ahem, I ain't doing nothing. Just came out to look at the stars, is all.
Elsie, I heard you say Logan.
Yeah, I can't believe he'd betray us like that! I hate him!
And you have every right.
I mean, I don't know, I ain't like, hating him, really. I guess, I'm just so dang mad! I just can't make no heads or tails of it! Why'd he take Matilda? What the heck do you want? Why can't you just talk about it? Where's he now, huh? I wanna just go and ask him. I'm just feeling stuck, is all.
Well, the real question is, do you still wanna support him?
I ain't giving up yet! Or else I wouldn't be this angry, you know?
I suppose.
When I was little, I remember I tried to climb this tree. He was just standing there laughing at me. But then he told me to slow down and I wouldn't get hurt. And then, when I was six, I got attacked by a monster. And he saved me. We grew up together for ten years. I looked up to him, you know? Like, how can I describe how I'm feeling now? It's like, my heart is hurting or something. Like, it's like...
I think that's why they call it betrayal, hon.
I got it, like, you and me, Ann, right? You known each other real long. What if Bird just came along one day and he's saying, "Me Ann's been cutting down all the trees, and he sent her to tree jail! Whole town's now hating her!" Would you still trust her?
Ah, I don't really like any of those answers. But, I guess... You know, I'd make a judgment based on facts.
But nah, like, it looks like it's one way, but it's different.
I hear what you're saying, Elsie.
Ugh, I'm just so confused! I don't know what to do! He really did something unspeakable, but I wish everyone would just calm down and talk. Not like anyone will ever listen to me.
I mean, you got a point there, Elsie. It would be better if Logan just had some way of saying why he's doing the things he's doing. Especially why he's doing it out of nowhere. Aside from the whole church bombing, his dad being quarantined and all that. But, um, it seems like a bit of an extreme reaction, if you ask me. Don't worry, we're all gonna find out what's going on eventually, but, you know, I'm trying to be a character here.
Hey, why is it when you say something, do something, everyone's always listening to you? Why is it so easy to trust you?
Because I'm a looker! Uh, yes, I'm so hot, um... 'Cause I've worked hard for this town.
That's true. You're working every day. You're working when I get up, when I doze off, when I'm herding cattle, catching birds. Even when I'm eating, you're still working.
It's 'cause I don't really need to eat, but we won't talk about that.
You've done so much good for so many folks round here. If they ain't listening to you, they ain't listening to no one. Alright, I gotta prove myself to everyone. Then they'll finally listen to what I have to say for once.
What are you planning on doing?
Let me see. I don't know, what did we do before? I mean, going to his house was my idea, anyway. Ugh, I really don't know what to do! Think, Elsie, think! Well, I ain't giving up on him. He ain't innocent, but there must be some reason. But, I don't know. All I know is, I still gotta do some growing on my own. I don't know what to do next. Ugh, I think I've been thinking too much today. My brain's all used up.
Both are good answers. I think she already kinda works hard on the ranch, though. Maybe not to the extent that Coop wants her to, and yeah, she gets a little... I wouldn't say lazy, she just goofs off sometimes. But, I mean, she's gotta have free time every now and then. Can't just be work, work, work. We do it because that's the game. Me Ann does it because she grew up from a family of builders. And if you're not working, then you are wasting time. That's the mindset she grew up with. For Elsie, I think a good answer would be... Why don't you try to help the people around town?
People in town? I don't reckon they want my help no more. When I go near them, they think I'mma do a prank or something. They just wanna get rid of me.
Okay, well, to be fair, you kinda brought that on yourself, 'cause that's all you ever done.
I reckon I'll start with helping Ma and Pa.
That sounds like a good answer, I suppose.
Alright, I got it! I'mma learn from you. I'm gonna be someone people can rely on.
Atta girl!
I'mma get serious. Start small, you know? I reckon getting the old man, I mean Pa, to respect me is my first step, huh?
Yeah, that would probably be a good idea. He really already should respect you. But, you know, you gotta do what you gotta do, I guess. Would be better if you just, you know, you had a talk with him. I think.
Alright, I'm feeling better now. Thanks. Let's head back now, yeah?
Yeah! Ooh, yeah, look at them stars!
Look, a shooting star! Did you see it?
Honestly, I don't know if I did.
Quick, quick! Make a wish!
Uh... I want Banjo to appear first thing in the morning.
Shooting stars are so beautiful. Did you make a wish? What'd you wish for?
It doesn't work if you say it, Elsie.
Alright, alright. Keep it a secret, then. I wanna tell you mine, though. I wish that we could be friends forever.
Aw, ain't that sweet?
Thanks for staying with me. I know I can go on a bit. Alright, I gotta get. See you later!
See ya! Ooh, look at all that friendship! Today is just a day of friendship. Alrighty... I mean, I really do get what Elsie's saying. Yeah, start off small. I think it would be better to, you know, help out people around town, but she does kind of have a point... Oh, wow, I'm getting stuck. She does kind of have a point that the people in town kind of only see her one way, but like, that's because that's how she's always been? Gotta be outside the circle first. I gotta enter the circle after 2300. It's kinda weird. Um... That is kind of the way she's always been, so it's kind of hard for people to see her any other way, but like... I don't know. Working harder for her dad is probably good, but I think a talk is also in order. But I don't think that, uh, doing stuff for people around town wouldn't hurt either. So... A little mix of both, I think, would work in her favor. 'Cause if by doing stuff for people and not pulling pranks, it would change all of their minds. If she's just doing stuff for Coop, it only changes his mind, maybe. Or makes him double down. He seems like the double-down type. And really, he is the double-down type, let's be honest. Um... So... Yeah. It's a tough situation for Elsie, but you don't worry. You know, she gets through it eventually. Some good stuff happens for her. Only a few more seconds now. Boom! Alright, now we can go into the circle.
Hey! Nice to see you again! Come on, let's go dig for some scrap together! We found a lot of new scrap from the ruins today, so we should be able to recycle a lot of good things. Wait, did you hear something?
Who's there?
Uh-oh! We've been cut!
Uh-oh, we need to hide, quick!
Who's there? Somebody stealing from me?
I thought you said it was cool with Rocky.
Oh no, what do we do?
You're the one that... This is your idea!
Hold in the name of the mechanical claw, both of yous!
Hold in the name of the mechanical claw?
Venti? And you two? What in the heck is going on here? You two been sneaking in here?
Boss, I'm sorry. It was my idea. My friend had nothing to do with it.
Venti, I can hardly believe what I'm seeing! Am I not paying you enough? I trust you with the keys and this is what you go and do? Then you going and bringing an honest builder into your little scam? Give me one good reason why I shouldn't send you packing!
I... I...
Oh geez, I really don't wanna throw her under the bus. Uh... I really, I mean, this is the truth? But I also don't wanna throw her under the, under the bus, so... Venti does have a good heart.
But what, she wanted to help you? Get free scrap? Well, guess what? If we don't get paid, we don't eat. And if we don't eat, ain't nobody to put free scrap up here for you to steal, Venti! Look, uh... I don't want none of this to reflect badly on you Fall of Salvage Co., alright? So, let's keep all this in the family, yeah? You keep whatever Venti gave you. I ain't gonna press charges or nothing. Venti, you take some time off, you're benched. Clear your head. I'll do the same. We'll talk about this in a couple days.
Okay.
Sorry you had to see that. I'm gonna try and get some shut eye. You oughta do the same.
Oh man, Rocky's a good boss. Oops, wrong button, once again. Yeah, it's rough. I mean, to be, um... To be fair, we are just as much at fault as Venti. Yes, she insisted and said, "Oh yeah, be fine, Rocky says it's cool." But we should've maybe pressed harder. Of course, the game doesn't let us, but... Oh my god, all these relics. I'm gonna sell all these relic pieces. I know some people like to, you know, make the relics or put them together, whatever it's called. Honestly, they just clutter up the place for me, most of them. So yeah, I'll just keep that going. Um... So... Yeah, I just sell the pieces, except for the ones that I absolutely need to make for like, uh, Missions or story reasons and stuff. So, ooh, right. Gotta go dig in. Gotta go digging real bad. Yikes. Yeah, definitely need... Bra- uh, tin? Copper? And iron? Probably wouldn't hurt to get more chrome, too. So, to Gecko... Guess it's probably a good thing that we paid to get into Fall of Two, cause we're gonna need some... Hefty kapa. Uh, marble. I wanted to buy a marble. Uh... Glass? Yeah, let's do glass. Yep, that's all good. Wow, that went down fast, okay. Okey dokey, Dan! Throw this stuff away. Oh, we didn't see Maquiato and Nemo today. Oh well, I'm in no rush to adopt them, cause I don't exactly have room for them right now. Uh, let's put the dew away. Ooh, we got a point! Holy crap, it's already 1am. Um... So yeah, let's do this. Workshop stuff, okay. Gain 3% chance for the ore refinery and recycler to provide additional output, okay. Um... Yeah, we wanted the extra slots. Do that. And... Oh caramel, you can find your own way back to your stall. That's just how the game works. Wakey-wakey, eggs and Becky! Got a fireside meeting tonight, can't forget that, ooh!
Uh, hey, yo! You talked to Venti lately?
Dude, it's been a night!
Maybe I went too far, I dunno. I thought I kept my head screwed on better than usual.
Dude, you were honestly very reasonable.
I asked all the boys, and Peck said Venti's taking personal time. Digging up scrap in places we ain't gotta go, all so she can give it to... You. She ain't never had a lot of friends, so, like... I think she's worried. Maybe, I dunno. Like somehow she screwed everything up with everybody. Me, you, all the boys. I was gonna talk to her myself, but then Crystal said, "You better do it." I might fly off the handle again.
Honestly, you reacted as any boss probably would've.
But, uh, you guys are pals too, right? Think you can find out what's going on in her head? Maybe cheer her up a little?
Yeah, for sure, I'm on it.
Hey, thanks. Really appreciate it. Venti's an all-star over at Salvage Co., so... Yeah, it'd be silly to let something like this come between us. Tell her how we feel, too, if you get the chance, yeah?
Absolutely.
She's mostly been sitting out front of the scrapyard moping, talking to herself about... Something. You can't miss her. Good luck.
Alrighty. Okay. Well, I don't immediately see Mr. Gecko, so it's Timon first today. And I did see Banjo taking off, first thing. I don't know where he goes so early in the morning. He's got everything he needs here. Maybe someone in town is feeding him. We'll find him. Okay, so you get water. Alright, Gecko? Oop! And you? You know what? Ooh, sixteen hours. You know what? You are my strongest little buddy, so you go do combat. From ya! "I heard you fix up both those stations yourself, good work newbie." "It's good to see builders take a shine to some competition once in a while." "All this teamwork and friendship just creates inefficiency, and inefficiency costs money." "Well, here's your reward, as promised." "I hope to see this attitude more often." Dude, that's a... Ooh, grr. I won't even... Wow. Mazur play! Wow, that's something else! "So plants actually contribute nutrients to the soil if they've been there long enough." "I always just assumed they ate stuff out of the dirt and turned it into oxygen." "Is that taught in science class?" If so, I might've missed it. Oh, oh mama. No. I mean, as far as I know... Uh... They don't eat stuff out of the dirt. Uh, plants get water from their roots being in the ground. I don't know how they get... If it's oxygen, I know they, you know, photosynthesize oxygen Through the sun hitting their leaves and stuff. And I guess oxygen is technically in water. I honestly don't know. Plants are not my thing, I kill anything I try to grow. Okay? Ah... I am not the person to ask. Talk to Nia! I mean, she lives closer than Nia, why don't you just ask her? Okay, uh, commission board? Okey dokey. Plastic shells, canvas... Filtration cores... And hardwood sticks. Ahhh, I guess we'll just take all of them, yeah. Alright. Think I might have enough hardwood sticks already? Yeah, I've got nine, I've got so many plastic shells. Okay. Be easier if I just do this. I need four more canvas. Yeah, four more canvas, okay. Oh, I desperately need juke. I should buy some at Moisture Farm soon. Okey doke. I am gonna have to do some rearranging for the yard, too. Hey, Venti?
Oh, pile of rubber scrap! How could I let down Boss Rocky like this? He must be so disappointed in me. It's all my fault. The situation became so awkward. And now, my friend probably hates me too.
Let's talk to her, cause she needs a human to talk to, not a pile of scrap.
Oh, it's you! What brings you here?
Honestly, um, this.
I'm sorry for dragging you into trouble last time. I should've told Boss Rocky earlier. Because of me, he almost thought you were stealing too.
Well, I mean, technically, we were.
I just wanted to get closer to you. Thought that Boss Rocky wouldn't notice. Bringing you to dig up scrap? It's like what Grande and I used to do. Sneaking into Baja's many junkyards to find food.
That, that, that's so sad. Wow. A junkyard to find food. Well, you know, the one thing I gotta say is if she thought it was so wrong, why did she hide it? Or, if she thought she was in the right, why did she hide it? That, that's kind of the crux of the issue. Cause then if she had talked to Rocky when she should've foredoing any of that... Um... He would've said yes or no, probably no. And she would've known.
I'm sorry.
Honestly, I think your hurt was in the right place, Venti.
Well, thank you for saying that. You're really kind. I think I was just feeling down. Everything was so embarrassing. I feel like I remember that moment of getting caught every night before I go to sleep for decades.
I mean, I would be too.
Thank you so much for coming to comfort me. It's okay, though. I'm still optimistic, Venti! I've written a report reflecting on my mistakes and Boss Rocky is willing to accept my apology. Starting tomorrow, I can go back to work again.
I, I thought... You... What? The, the reason I'm out here is cause Rocky didn't talk to you, or to...
Oh dear. Look at me crying over spilled mysterious liquid like a child. Anyway, uh, thank you so much for being there for me. Let's get back to work now. Bye!
Bye! Yeah, like, I thought, I thought the whole reason that we got sent out here is because Rocky was like, "Oh, I might blow my, my top again." Can you go talk to her instead? We said yeah, it was pretty much immediately right after. Right? Am I missing something? Purchase! Here's your filters.
Thank you!
You're welcome. Hey, Justice! And Arvio, I got your sticks. Oh, come on.
Thanks!
Alrighty! That's Maquiato, you know what? Maquiato? Hello, missy! And here is your roost. Yeah, eight's still better than three. What is, oh, just, oh, I want us to go fishing again? I don't wanna go fishing again.
Uh huh.
I know you got a good hand with the tr- oh my god, how many fish do you need, man? Two sandakuda. You know, there comes a point where he stops asking for you to get fish? I don't know when that is, I thought it was a lot sooner. I, I honestly thought the answer was a lot sooner than this, or, um... I got mixed up with Matilda's little sermon that she's got going on there. Um, I honestly thought it happened a lot sooner. Maybe I'm wrong. Totally forgot this is for Chi. Here's your plastic goods, sir! Thank...
Thank you.
Usable. Do you not know how to give a compliment at all? We are almo- okay, I was gonna say we're almost done getting all of these, but yeah, no. We're not really that close. Uh, yeah, definitely need to go digging. That will probably be the remainder of this episode, is just digging. Not very exciting. Sorry about that. There, there are the odd boring episodes. I dunno, I think they're boring. They're less noticeable when you're just going, uh, day to day, to day, to day, to day. When you're only doing like, two episodes. Or sorry, two, ooh! Hey Fang! Uh, two... Nope, that's not what I wanted. I wanted to actually talk to Fang. Ooh, when's your birthday, good sir? It did not highlight, so I did not read it, I'm sorry.
Do you want a cracker? Do you want a cracker?
Soon.
No, no!
What a demanding little bird. Um, when you're only doing like, two days... There's Banjo! Uh, two days per episode... Then, it, it, it seems more boring than it actually is to kind of get drowned out, otherwise. Okay, what are you gonna get? You know what, we're gonna have you dig. Cause we have Timon doing water. Um... Digging, digging, digging. You know what, let's go get copper first. Let's do this. Always need more simple circus. Um... Let's start on... Nine, oop, hit my microphone. Uh, let's start on nine, actually, no. Let's just keep going here. There's gonna be a lot of copper regardless. I'm pretty sure we're now at the floor that offers tin. Did I get any? Do I have any stimulants for stamina? So I wanna ride this all the way to the end here. Do I even have any? Ooh, what happened to my... Everything we used to show up? Wrong button? Things used to, oh, show description. There it is. He must add health points. It's also health points. Yeah, I got no stamina medicine. So we will do this, and we'll get a couple of these. We'll get three. Not gonna use them all the day, of course. Show me that kapa! I don't know why I'm still looking for relics, I honestly... Well, it's mostly the old parts. Spaceship model, yeah, I don't want any of those. Yeah, it's, it's mostly the ore we're after. That's a little far. There we go. Knew I missed something over here. Just getting all the spots. Gotta move on to the next room. Guess, uh, we would've seen ten by now, so yeah, it's probably not ten. It's not the tin floors yet. Ooh, we got the nebula. And we have another point to spend. What is this for? Okay, what do we want? Kicking trees, gathering knowledge. Double gathering knowledge, experience. Uttering food. Sand trap. Totally forgot about the fish. Let's just do that one. Man, I totally forgot about the fish, but you know what, we're just gonna fail that. Maybe he'll stop asking. I love you, Owen, but go get your own stupid fish. Or ask someone who actually enjoys fishing. Like, uh, Elsie. Elsie wants to help out more, go get fish for Owen. I wish that was an option. Just be like, hey, can I suggest so-and-so instead? But there is tin, hallelujah. I am floating. In the air, I am floating. Okay, I'm pointing this way. Thank you. Is that in Rubik's Cube? It totally is. Come on, tin and copper. Tin and copper. Oh, there it is. And now it's back. Fireside meeting. Aw, I should not have taken that hemostat. Stupid, stupid. Aw, man, what a waste. I totally forgot about the fireside meeting. Okay, we'll get as much done as possible. We'll get a notice at seventeen hundred about it. Come on, give me that tin. Give me that tin. We are on level five now. Just gotta remember that. Get as much as we can before we have to leave. Yep. I knew it. Soon, soon. We will leave soon. Man, I feel so stupid. I should've just ate that jerky. Okay. Aw, man, I feel so dumb. Well, maybe after the meeting, we'll chop up some scrap and make you feel like we made it was worth it. Thank you for tailcoating properly, horse. Go, Banjo, go! Dig your little heart out. Oh, man, I don't have a thumbnail for this episode yet. Nothing super exciting happened, so yeah. We'll take one during the meeting here. We shall see.
Hello, everyone. Thank you for coming today. Following that whole kidnapping debacle, Logan's continued evasion of our forces, and huh, I'm sure a lot of you have questions for us. Here to put all your fears to rest is none other than our trusty head of the civil corps, Sheriff Justice. Justice, please tell our good people how you plan to work with the specialist to catch Logan, Haru, and that young bandit boy before he gets himself into any worse trouble.
Well, Mayor, rather than answering directly, we are ready to deliver a profile.
A what?
A profile on the newest member of the Logan gang.
Interesting.
We believe our suspect is a Caucasian male, somewhere between the age of ten and eighteen.
That's pretty broad.
Our current theory is that Logan's forcing him to serve through some nefarious method. Or, someone took his toys away at some point in his early years. Now he seeks retribution, trying to steal back the childhood that was stolen from him.
Essentially, you're saying you got nothing besides, he's possibly a kid, but he might be an adult. That, tha- that's basically it. And he's, he has to have some tragic backstory. I mean, he does, but like, definitely not this.
Due to the fact that we've never noticed him up until this point, we believe he's someone who joined recently.
Correct.
We will not rest until we apprehend this criminal, as well as every other member of the Logan gang. Ah, one more thing. Here's a photo of the specialist who should be arriving soon. If you see him wandering around town, just send him over to City Hall or the Civil Corps. He's-
Whoop, I did not mean to cut him off. I am so sorry. He, I think I was supposed to say, he's a specialist? Okay.
That's it? Justice, I said I wanted good news. What was that?
Look, Mayor, I told you I didn't wanna do this press conference thing. Truth is, we got hoodwinked by those guys in the Miller Schooler. And we have no idea where they went. You prefer me telling everyone that?
I wasn't asking you to bend the truth. I just thought, I just thought you were going to come up with something more substantial.
I'm not a mind reader, Mayor. You said you wanted good news, and I said I'd come up with something. That was the something.
I thought you did good.
I, of course he did, I'm sure.
Yeah, thanks, buddy.
Come on, Mayor, we'll get him someday, don't worry.
Indeed. We're glad to have you offering assistance as well.
No problem.
But I'm being honest, there's pretty much nobody I'd rather be in a foxhole with than you.
Aw, thanks, Justice.
Yeah, your top five good fighters that I know, at least.
Wow, top five. High praise.
You got a list?
I hope our specialist gets here soon.
I don't know how I feel about this specialist.
Burgess, my child, please, tell me what ails you. Allow me to put your worries to rest.
I, I really don't think we need a bounty hunter. There must be another way. I mean, Logan breaks a lot of rules, and there needs to be punishment for sure, but he's still one of the flock, right, pastor? Right?
Ooh, awkward silence.
I just remember reading that it's conflicts between people like this that led to the day of calamity. If we escalate, what would Logan do? I just don't want to see anyone getting hurt. Maybe we can still reason with him?
Honestly, if we get him, if we could get him to stay still for just a little while, and not feel like he's gonna be arrested, which I know is almost impossible, we really should try and talk it out.
See? That's what I'm saying!
Look, we tried to tell him the truth about his father. He didn't listen. We tried to reach out to him after he blew up the temple. He ignored us. After the last few incidents, the time for dialogue has passed. Something needs to change.
Yeah.
If you have any better ideas, I suggest you take them up with City Hall. We've made our decision. Regardless of how you feel, I hope you'll join me in praying for our own success. Now, if you'll excuse me, I must check on the minister. She has decided to spend some time out of the spotlight following the recent mishap.
I'll prepare her some extra mush.
That's very kind, but won't be necessary.
Yeah, cuz nothing cures. Nothing, um, makes you feel better. I thought, I thought you were in bed, ma'am. Look at you. You was supposed to be resting. Maquero, I fed you already today, but you're still in the exact same spot. Wow. Yeah, I don't, I don't think we're gonna be... Maybe we can try and get those sandakudas. But I think it'll be too late to get them to Owen by the time we do get them. Do I even have the worms? Yes, I do. Okay. Holy crap. Okay, that was fast. Hope Owen isn't closed. I still have the worm, so that's a good sign. He's upstairs. Having supper. Yes, I, yes, I know it's urgent. There you go. Please stop asking me for fish. Nemo, what are you doing in here? Oh, what can I give you that you might like? Probably nothing that I have on hand. Have a roost. Three is better than nothing. Alrighty then. Let's go. Get the roo- ooh, wow, you popped up real fast. Uh, let's go get the rest of the scrap in the yard. It's a little late to go all the way to the bottom for more copper and whatnot. But we might as well get this stuff. Ooh, totally forgot about the canvas, too. That'll be done by now. Ah, we can deliver to, I think, Unshure in the next episode. I smash and I bash. I get all the goodies. And I'm not gonna finish that cuz I don't know how. Worst haiku slash poem ever. Alright, anything new over here that we could dig up? Not yet, except for the rubber. Well, taking that hemostat wasn't a complete waste, I guess. Got in the bed with more stamina, so... Ooh, look at that, I am farting sprinkles. Not the way that's hilarious, but just that, like, yeah, I am sparkling. Ooh, cuz I have luck, extra luck. Nope, not what I wanted to do. Actually, though, speaking of which, fertilizer. You know what? Let's make it. Cuz then I can throw it on some of that stuff to hopefully make it grow faster, cuz these aren't done yet. And if not to make it grow faster, to give us more. Ooh, that's his letter. Nia's reply. "Right? I think they're both really interesting jobs. I guess we're so similar, I guess we're so similar that we kind of got drawn to the same jobs. Anyway, your friend forever, Nia." Yay, Nia friendship points. Yeah, I know, I said at the beginning, wow, capture a meatball? What? Um, I know I said at the beginning that I'm not a big fan of Nia. But, I mean, like, she kinda grows on you after a while. It's just at the beginning, she's very meh. "For animals that can be captured, throwing one at an animal will increase capture affinity. Can also be fed to pets to give a slight experience boost." Huh. Maybe I'll give that to Banjo. No, Nemo. Since I don't know what to give Nemo as, uh, gifts. So, whoop, and that's past 1:00 AM, so we'll call it here. Uh, once again, thank you for joining me. Uh, not sure when the next episode is gonna be out, but, uh, hopefully in a week or so, maybe even tomorrow, I'm not sure. We'll see what happens. Um, but yeah, thank you for joining me. It was a good session, if not a lot happened. But, um, yes, yes, I know I need to, I need to rest. Gonna be yawning soon. Um, but yeah, you guys have good night, day, whenever you're watching this, and we will see you next time. Bye!